Hey there, how's it going? Red, also known as Athlete over on a tryhack me servers. Uh all I'm gonna be doing today is gonna be messing around on the search bar and see what I can find um and see what I can knock out. So I'm gonna go ahead and sudo so way I can get started. I've already started my uh open VPN so all I'm doing is uh I went to tryhack me and this is uh the dashboard from the dashboard you go over to learn and then uh you go over to the search bar. Um I've been working on the cyber defense portion uh cyber defense path and um I just feel I feel like trying to something else so I'm gonna be sorting it by difficulty. I'm gonna do easy. I got lots of easy boxes to do uh so might as well. Hide completed. We have the most popular ones here um what do we wanna look for today? Most popular sounds pretty good. Could also go by newest and then most users. Um so what should we mess with today? Um well I mean this is real easy. It's just tutorial. Gonna duplicate tab here real quick and I'm gonna go to my dashboard. Um I recently got to level eleven so uh the master level not that the levels matter but it's nice to 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 have something to work towards. So it looks like I need a little under two thousand more points in order to make it to uh guru. So and then you get that nice red colour over on the tryhack me discord. Um so we'll see if this gets any points. We'll go to welcome. See what happens here. I feel like welcome should be like the very first thing that I have should have ever done but uh there goes. It's created by tryhack me so that's good and it's for your room. So what are rooms? Think of a room like a virtual classroom that teaches a security topic. Use a mixture of guides and challenges to upskill in different areas of cybersecurity. So what are you gonna do? Click join a room in order to access the material. Rooms include questions that award you points. Use the leaderboards to see where you rank against other fellow hackers. Alright. Again, the point is not necessarily to skill up or excuse me not to uh gain points. It's just one of the fun aspects the the whole gamification or whatever. I like it uh and it helps give me a goal to work towards. Um although ultimately the goal is to learn how to uh better uh use these cyber securi security skills in order to uh have a a better security environment for users and for yourself even right? So uh let's keep that in mind. The these points they're all made up and they're just for fun. But I'm gonna get as many as I can. Alright uh deploy your first machine. Click the green button so let's see some tasks. We'll have you learning by doing often through hacking a virtual machine. You can access your machine through the browser or you can uh go ahead uh when you do that you control the frame machine on the browser to access other machines you deploy and get hacking quicker. So if I wanted to use a um attack box that's what I would be I'd be using this attack box to start a machine in a browser that I could uh use as my uh attack platform. Um but I decided to go to access here and get myself a open VPN file um which I downloaded and then I used the open VPN command in order to connect to the network. So uh the way you're able to tell that you're on a network you type I P A or A I P adder uh and you can see here ton zero is where your I P at or your I P for the VPN is gonna be. So this is the I P that the other computers on network for tryhack me see me as. Alright so let's see deploy the machine wait a minute for it to configure. This is the machine that we're gonna be attacking here. This can be our target ten ten two oh nine two forty seven. Copy the I P of the machine that we're gonna be deployed. Go to the my machine page and click the start machine button. As a free user you can only deploy the free attack box once a day for one hour. I subscribe uh I pay money nobody pays me uh and I don't have this limit. So paste I P you copied earlier into the browser based machines Firefox. Uh mm I don't want to. Uh I'm gonna I'm not gonna use the browser. I'm gonna use my own browser. Um my own machine. Uh once I do that make sure that I am not a uh alright I'm not using any proxy anything. You can access tryhack machines dope. Flag connection verified. Go ahead. Got me some points fantastic next steps. Once you've managed to deploy machine access to tryhack me machine excuse me search for security topic to learn on the hack activities page. Don't forget to check out our pathways for more guided learning experience and I've done a bunch of those pathways. They're pretty cool. Uh I'm happy to answer any questions regarding some of the paths that I've done um or the paths that I've kind of like toyed with. And let's see other interesting offerings. We release weekly security challenges and walkthroughs. I gotta check those out. I have not messed with those. You can upload your own V M s and make your own rooms. That is something that I would love to do 'cause I got a ton of um random experience and it might be nice to kind of like put it into like an actual like product something that I can help uh the community with right? And come join the discord. I've done that. It's a lot of fun. Good peoples. Read the above and explore tryhack me. Congratulations. Enjoy your nice serotonin boost. You got it. You can go share it on Twitter or whatever and uh have yourself a good old time. So let's take a look now. I'll go back to the dashboard. See if I got any points at all for completing that. And it looks like no points were earned for that room but that's okay. Um but it does look like we've gotten four new users on tryhack me so hey check it out. Alright dangerous. Alright dope. So let's go ahead and uh talk about these learning paths here real quick. If you click learn you go to uh the learn tab here. You will see that there's uh several paths junior penetration testers pre security cyber defense complete beginner offensive pen testing comp Tia pen testing and web fundamentals. Um apparently this is organized uh by newest to the top left and then the oldest toward the bottom. So uh that's as they have put them out chronologically they've been kind of uh adding them to to this area. So this is the newest one junior penetration tester and web fundamentals is the oldest one. I personally started with complete beginner because it has complete beginner so you know I figured that's where I should start however this one is going away very soon. I don't know how how many days it's gonna be but that's gonna be gone. Um my junior penetration tester is gonna be taking on excuse me pre security will be taking over for complete beginner. Um and and this no longer exists but the the rooms that it's connected to will still kinda be there right? Um the uh so I did complete beginner then I did pre secu security took like not very long to complete that after completing uh the complete beginner uh because there's a lot of overlap. I then did the web fundamentals followed by the comp Tia pen testing and then junior penetration tester. And now I have been bouncing between the cyber defense and the offensive pen testing uh paths. Cyber defense I'm not gonna lie to you has been um very interesting because there's a lot to learn however it can be a little dry. Uh and the offensive pen testing I'm just kinda kinda save the best for last. Um so while I'm doing this cyber defensive stuff uh going over here to the search bar and there's tons of rooms that are not on any of those paths and you can make paths of your own right? So uh we just knocked out that welcome. Let's see what other if there's any other easy ones we can do. Uh actually hold on one moment. Let me go ahead and I'll be right back. Alright sorry about that uh had a text message and I wanted to go and check it out. So let's see do you have any recommendations on what I should do? Uh I have it sorted by easy difficulty stuff and most popular right now but they have challenges and walkthroughs uh and things that are subscription only and free only so um let's see maybe we can do uh what do they got for easy walkthroughs? And we'll see what they have available. I'm not sure if it's completely loaded yet. Looks like they have over ten pages available with uh the th stuff I've done completed um what if we did C T Fs challenges? And there's only eight pages. Oh this one here is root me a C T F for beginners can you root me? It looks like it has been tagged with security web Linux and privilege escalation. Um that might be fun. Let's go ahead and try it. See if I've started it at all. Okay no I've never done this before uh access materials not machines. Let's see what happens yeah. Alright so how do I like to do things? I like to try to stay organized so um I'm gonna go to my tryhack me folder and I'm gonna make a directory for uh root me. Uh I like to oh this is our room name. I like to make the names of the rooms uh and the names of my folders match up. Alright uh so let's see they got anything in there? Nothing at all great. Gonna put this here. I'm gonna make this a little bit more conducive for study for me. And we'll see how this works out. Oop typos. Alright uh start machine. I'm gonna start getting my other tabs ready. Hopefully you're having a great time yourself um or if you're just listening that's cool too. Enjoy having uh people around. Study time is the best time for me. Alright so I like to have one for my M S F D B so M S F D B run that's gonna spin up M S F console for me and start the database. Um this one will probably be go buster so I'm gonna start getting my go buster command prepared. Go buster dir tech U and then whatever the I P is gonna be probably ten ten dot something something and then I'm gonna get my word list going so um user share wordless uh dirtbuster and I'll use the directory two point three small. See what happens with that and I'll I'll even output it to uh go buster small dot text. Cool. So that's what I'll get here. Looks like I have an I P and I'm gonna go ahead and try to use this I P as a web page. Um I'm gonna make a workspace in M S F console so workspace tech A R R Oopie. Uh okay uh and I'm gonna prepare my uh scan so we'll do Nmap uh tac S S and then uh instead of going for all ports why don't we just go ahead for the uh basic ports I guess. That way we can start working with something. Alright. Give it another minute just to make sure it's up and running. Alright so it might not have a web browser which is fine. Uh looks like eighty eighty excuse me eighty and two two are up so let's make sure that it doesn't have this. Dope alright can you root me? Uh looks like those came really easily so I'm gonna now enumerate my servers with defaults services and default scripts and I put port two two and eighty. Two two is probably gonna be S S H which is normal um and I'm gonna start my go buster here directory small. Alright what did I mess up? Unable to connect H D P. Ah well it would help if I use the correct I P address so I'm gonna need one two thirty eight. Great. So it's gonna take a little while to run which is cool. Looks like hack it. Uh s as open S S H uh seven point six P one so probably not gonna be anything in H D P D Apache two point four two point two nine. Cool. So I'm gonna start playing with this here. Robots that text to see if it has anything probably not. Okay nothing on the robots that text. Uh take a look at the page source. Máquina de escribir so máquina de escribir is Spanish for um uh machine to write. So uh I'm guessing that's what's typing out this stuff here. That javascript makes sense. Title is root at root me. So uh let's see what else can we do here? Um P H P slash I D. It's cool. Anything else that I can detect? So it's got running P G H P. I'm wondering if I'm gonna be able to get a P H P reserve uh reverse here. It looks like uploads is a folder where I probably gonna be putting my P H P up upload. Nice. Alright so go back. Um let's see. They got another scan running here. So I'm gonna search for open S S H seven point six P one. Okay nothing there. Search for Apache two point four point two nine. Nothing there. I'm gonna create a new folder. sudo that guy. Desearch for it. We have the open S S H. Seven point six P one username enumeration that might be good. So they have two num or two different uh user numeration well three I guess. So let's go ahead and take a look at this one here. Um so we will go to my uh root me folder and we're gonna um let's copy it here for now so locate that to here. And we're now vim it for five. Anything below seven point seven. Start function at Boolean L four packets. Alright cool. Let's see uh what pop what pops off here um for five oh. Probably have to type Python. In the meantime I'm gonna go back here see what this panel's about. Probably an admin panel. Yep alright. Alright shell that P H B. So I'm gonna we're not worried about that right now. I'm gonna vim my shell that P H B. See what it looks like. Alright one two three four is the uh port that I have on this one. So I'm gonna copy it to here. Oop not uploads. Alright uh let's go ahead. We'll uh upload. Actually let's go ahead and make um a net cat listener on V P one two three four was what we're using. Go ahead and upload it. Ah looks like that's Portuguese now permitivo P H P is not allowed. Dope. I am excited that there is a foreign language in here. Oh I love it uh cool. So P H P is not allowed but it's P H P three um uh P H P alternatives extensions. Alright so P H P is not allowed. So let's um shell that P H B we'll make it as um P H C M L. And see if how it works out. Alright the archive has been uploaded successfully so now let's go to uploads. Nice. Let's see if it'll uh oh well I should probably be listening to my boom alright that's roll baby let's do it. L S where am I? Or data. See if we can start answering some questions here. Deploy the machine got it. Reconnaissance two ports. Version of Apache. Uh what do we say here? Two point four point two nine. S S H is running on twenty two. Nutch S S H. Run directories uh got it. What is hidden directory? Well but what I'm talking about is upload. Uploads. Where's the other one we were just at? Panel. Alright getting shell. Usually not text. Alright let's see where we're at. Nope that's not it. Go back here. Oop. C D test. History nothing. Uh let's see if I can exit. Where am I? P W D I am at home test. I got nothing here C D. Dash history. I should probably stabilize my shell but uh I don't wanna. C D root me. Sudo is admin successful. Alright. Uh cat mm Etsy Chrome tabs I think. Etsy Chrome tab. Etsy Chrome. Yeah alright um let's see what else can I do real quick? I can't sudo that L. So all I have is home and root me. Got Etsy password. Okay. Var W W Can't user that text there we go. User var W W W you got a shell dope. Alright. What else we got? Privilege escalation. Now we have a shell. Let's escalate our privileges to root. Search for files with suit permissions. Which file is weird? Uh cool yeah I can do that. So I'm gonna use a Linux privesc uh uh notes that I that I used before um I just gotta find it. Linux privesc okay. See what I can find here. If anything. Really wanna navigate. Oh okay index that P H P. Hmm. Oh those are writable permissions. Disregard that's not what I wanted. Who fella. Uh alright I'm gonna minimize this 'cause it's difficult to see. Now we're looking for weird ones. Ooh. User bin Python. That might be good. See if that's right. User bin Python. That's the one. So using a Python script that's how we're gonna escalate our privileges so um ah here's a good um tool to use, so G T F O G T F O bins. So if you type in Python and we have suid, should tell you exactly what you should be able to do. And this is where we're gonna go and get ourselves a shell. Oh I'm probably gonna have to escalate using uh Cito. There we go. Who am I? Root, dope. See, let's go to root. Okay, root dot text. Privilege escalation. Nice, that was a that was a good one. Alright. Woo woo, we did it. Alright cool. So uh fun times, let's go ahead and give this person a shout out. Who did this? Who made this one? Um ah red ready z. Hello Omni friend and let's uh go say hi if they still exist. Thank you very much from Brazil. Thank you very much for the room, appreciate it. Um They got a web page huh? They got a GitHub. Let's go see what they got. Nice. So we'll go ahead and save that in our user pages. We'll come back to this later. Love that this person uh was doing their stuff in uh Brazilian Portuguese. That's I know that's not a Trihakamis thing but man, it made me happy. Alright. Cool uh well it's been thirty two minutes for me um. I guess let me go ahead and get a sip of water and we'll see what else we can do, yeah. Um did we get any points out of that one? We went from what uh fifteen uh fifteen thousand one hundred and fifty points to fifteen thousand three hundred and sixty, so that's cool, we got two hundred and ten points out of that. Dope, we'll see what else we can do uh after this. Be right back. Alright I'm back, uh let's see what else can we do? So we'll go back to learn, go back to search, go hide the completed things. We'll go back to easy difficulty 'cause you know we're taking it take it real easy. Go to a challenge. What's another good one we should do? Um What do you think? I do like I do like Cowboy Bebop, that was fun. There's gotta be another one. Mm. Do we wanna do some Google darking? Some OSINT? I don't know. Ugh I hate I'm gonna hate myself but I think I gotta do the bounty hacker. 'Cause it's probably gonna be harder than I anticipated. But screw it, no fear. Let's see what it says. You talk a big game of being the most elite hacker in the solar system. Prove it and claim your rights to the status of elite bounty hacker. Alright cool, whatever, see how this goes. You were boasting on and on about your lead hacker skills in a bar and a few bounty hunters decided to take it up uh take decided they take you up on claims. Prove your status is more than just a few glasses at the bar. I sense bell peppers and beef in your future. That's like what uh oh what the hell's his name, what he was eating in the first episode and they complained about it not being beef. Yeah, good times. Alright so who made this box? Can I tell? Sevel? Sevel? Alright cool. Uh gonna go ahead and make that tiny. Go back to my bounty hairy box there. Clear. Alright and just try to keep it organized, right? So uh make there, this one's called Cowboy Hacker. Alright uh I don't need this anymore. And I'll replace it here. And once I get that, oop I got the I P address right there, dope. And we'll go ahead and change our workspace. Workspace tech A cow boy hacker. Alright uh much the same as what we did before. We're just gonna scan for basic ports here um. I'm gonna go to the page, see what's up. Spike, that was his name, Spike. Alright. Oh look, you're finally about time, three more minutes and we're gonna go out with the garbage. Alright cool. We do like uh some Cowboy Bebop. Anything over here? Nothing, alright. Let's see the page source. Looks like they already got images. So I'm gonna go ahead and start bopping this out here. Using a small directory scanner, going to Cowboy Bebop. Images of course there, great. Clear that out. I'm gonna start our Nmap. In the meantime, let's drink some water, let's take a look at some Faye. Oh looks like S S H and A C T P already came out. So I guess uh screw water huh? So we'll go back and we'll do the same as what we did before. And then I'm gonna uh scan uh the the uh the extra ports, the the mo the less common ports. Alright. Looks like P H P is set on this one as well. Apache Ubuntu. Okay. So let's go see if there's anything that's starting to pop up here, let's see what's in images. Crew, not J P G, great. So now we've done that. See what comes back. Alright. Mm. Let's see if I get to do any of this here. Etsy password. Alright, can I go to Etsy password? Looks like I have Apache two point four eighteen on here. Uh any other enumeration that I can do, let's see, so we done our Go Buster, restarted our Nmap scan um Hmm. Uh well let's start looking at our questions here. Deploy the machine, dope. Find open ports on machine, dope. Who wrote the task list? Uh what? What task list? Uh alright. So Alright, now you told Spike here you can hack any computer on the system. We'd let Ed do it but we need her working on something else and you're getting real bold in that back bar back there. Now take a look around, see if you can get that uh root, get that root the system. See if you can get that root the system, okay. And don't ask any questions you know you don't need to answer to. If you're lucky I'll even make you some bell peppers and beef. I'm Ed, you should have access to the device they are talking about on your computer. Edward and Ein will be on a main deck if you need us. Alright, I appreciate it. I guess they're talking about J U. Tell? Well do we want a hint? Not yet. Hmm, let's go back to our source here, crew. What service can you root for is the text file found? Alright so uh I'm gonna go and look for text files now. Oh you know what else I should do? Um what I did last time, robots that tax although it hasn't popped up yet so it probably won't. Okay. And what else could I possibly do then? Mm. Still waiting on my Nmap scan, drink some water I guess. Hmm. I bet you, you know what, there's probably a P H P file on there too. Uh do I want to do this? It's gonna make things that much more difficult. P H P and I think I'm gonna change this from directory to common. Okay. Four O three. See, should go a lot m a lot faster, I'm using the common word list. Um while I'm waiting, I mean I can guess myself, right? This admin thing, portal panel. I wish I could uh remember what the pass uh not the password but the uh the ship was called. Um Let's go to search blade. Edward or exploit P V. Two point four point nine, I don't believe that is anything. And then we'll go to yeah uh open S S H, send points. Okay. Still waiting, still waiting on the directory enumeration. Hmm. Do I want do I wanna press, yeah I wanna press it instead. F T P, excuse me? Okay, so that's not something that we could possibly know yet. 'Cause not we have not seen any F T P on here. But I'm guessing on one of the higher ports on a non-standard port is probably where we're gonna find some F T P. Something I guess. 'Cause currently we're scanning on oh we're not doing oh no we are doing a sin scan. Scan s sin scan all ports. Uh what's S S H? S S H um damn it. No, okay good. S S H uh we'll do add at ten dot ten dot fifty seven two four zero zero. Uh password. No. Okay. Nothing new. Make sure I got my stuff here correct. Ha. Guys, why didn't you tell me that we're actually on fifty seven two four O? Images, yep, got the images, got the index. So this should be much um better for us. And I'm probably gonna go with the standard ports again. Because I basically have to go from scratch 'cause I messed up my my initial scan. See the I P addresses, gotta remember. Nope, there's F T P. Okay. S C S V, multiports, twenty one, twenty two and eighty. Telnet um F T P ten dot ten dot fifty seven dot two four O. Anonymous. Got it, alright. Um is it type? Task that text. Help. St think you can view or type or something. Usually I just get it. Type. Type. Okay, that's fine. Let's go ahead and get uh task that text. Let's get locks not text. We exit, we can check it out here. Bless task that task. Plan for red eye pickup on the moon, Lynn. Cool. What servers can you brute force that text file found? Uh cat locks, see what happens. Red dragon, oh hi. Ain't you red dragon reporting for duty? Alright uh cool. Well it's probably gonna be either S S H or F T P so uh but we don't need F T P so it's gotta be S S H. S S H, dope. Uh cool, let's do Hydra then. Uh Hydra, tack L. What do we have for a user? Uh I'm gonna add something to this list. Uh I'm gonna add something to this list. I think. Uh cat task. Plan for red eye pickup on a moon, Lynn. What is the user's password? So maybe it's gonna be Lynn. Let's see. Hydra, tech L, little L we're gonna use uh Lynn. Uh tech P will be locks. And then uh where are we going with this? Ten dot ten dot fifty seven dot two four O, S S H. We'll see if that works. If not, that's fine. Boom. Alright. Red dragon syndicate for Lynn. So let's go ahead, S S H, Lynn at ten dot ten dot five seven two four O. Lynn's password. Alright, who am I? Uh oh, cool. Oh that's cat user dot text. The crime syndicate, alright, let's go. Brute dot text, so pseudo tech L, see what we can do out here. What is her password? Oh, let's try that again, huh? Tar. Alright, uh so our good old get our g t f O bins. Go to tar, we have pseudo. So with pseudo boom. Who am I? Roots baby, alright. Too easy, man. Brute dot text. Bounty hacker, alright. Congratulations, we did it. Alright, let's go find out who we're talking about here. Thank you very much, uh Sevil, Sevil. Just a guy that thinks he knows what he's talking about and does YouTube videos. Oh hey, cool, we should go check out their YouTube then. Aw, they got their E J P T, cool. Let's go check out what their WordPress is. Add it to our users pages. Looks like they got a YouTube channel. Go ahead, subscribe, see what they got going on. Anything else that we wanna know about this person? Go ahead, go follow their GitHub. Alright, and I think this is just gonna be their WordPress again, yeah? Alright, well thank you very much for the room, I appreciate it. Let's go ahead, we finished in like eighteen minutes? Living up to the title. I like the uh I like the funness of this, I think that's a lot of fun. Alright, uh let's go ahead and take a quick snapshot. Alright. Woo! That's a whole um my god, uh that's not exactly what I wanted. Um but you know, fine, fine, that's fine, that's uh let's go ahead and put it in U folder, R R root, no, this was bounty hunter, right? Uh cowboy, cowboy hacker. Alright, cool. Dope, uh what else we got? Like what else is gonna be the good stuff? Run clear. And save this image. Thank you for the crew. Um let's see, how do we do um points now? We're at fif-teen thousand three hundred sixty, we went up to fifteen thousand five hundred and ten. Nice. So what's that like uh hundred and fifty points? Yeah, something like that, dope. Not bad, not bad. Alright, what is next? Let's go back to path. Don't need X Blake database right now. Gotta search for something. Not got some more easy stuff yet. Um do more C T Fs, sure. Hide completed. Hmm, what do we like here? Uh crack the hash, I mean that might be cool. I like this little picture. So seems promising. Alright. Uh dope. Let's show in the room and see what's going on here. Oh, okay, so this is can you complete the level one task by cracking the hashes? And then what's the next one? Uh okay, sure. Let's see a word for this hashcracker. Alright. I mean I feel like the right thing to do would be to try to use John the Ripper or something, but um sure. Uh I am going to create a new room. Crack the hash. And I'm gonna vim hashes, sure. And I'm just gonna I'm just gonna keep dropping stuff in here I guess. Let's see what happens. It's probably not the right thing to do by any means, but I'm I'm just curious, I'm just curious what'll happen if I do this. Like do I need to make it nice and neat or will John just just make it happen for me? Alright. Let's see. So we're talking about John the Ripper here. So John the Ripper, you I have Jumbo installed, so John uh I'm gonna use a word list equals uh rock you, right, 'cause that's what everybody uses. Word list, rock you. Anything else I need to know? Um sure, I'll make the pot here, um hash output, whatever. And then put the output or the password files, so password file, what is that is, hashes? And we'll see what happens. Session completed. Alright, maybe everything broke. Uh cool. Uh cat hash output. Nothing. So what did I mess up? Alright. Can I just do like a hash? Be like, what's it, what's there?
Hashcat, let's see.
Alright, let's see what I got here. Any good references? What I wanna do is just kind of like pop it into a crack station, honestly. See what crack station has to say. Oh actually, can I do more than one? Oh god, did I break it? Yeah, I lost it to mine. Alright, well we got several already. Easy password, one, two, three. It took literally no time at all for crack station to identify these. Alright. So actually, let's go ahead and output this to John. We're gonna echo hashes. And then we'll go back up here to our John thing. Hmm, do I gotta do single maybe? Single, single. Get rid of the word list, sure. No default, no hashes loaded. Hmm. So let's go ahead and go find out what this is. Of twelve. What is a hash of twelve? Is tall, right? B crypt? So it looks like we went to medium, two Y. See what they gotta say. Two Y, blowfish. With the hashcat came, cool. What else did we learn about it? So they use hashcat. My goal here was not to list example cracking all hashes, but to give tools, understanding. So sure, let's go ahead and try that. We'll do hashcat. Three two zero zero hash. And then we'll go to user share word list, rock you. See what happens. No hashes loaded. Hmm. Oh my god, no wonder. Alright. I'm uh let's go ahead and try that again. Copy, paste. I don't know what I messed up here, but it's gonna be quick fix, I think. Alright, uh I'm gonna go back to this. Done loaded, blowfish, easy, almost done. Alright, let's cat hash output. Hmm. Okay, that did not work. Let's go back to remove this single thing here. Alright, looks like it's actually running now. Well, it's running with rock you instead of just out in the open, doing whatever, so gonna wait for the difficulty. Take a look at this here. I tell ya, if crack station gets all these I don't know. This is a C T F here, so I am not uh or salt is a really hard salt. Oh, okay, yeah, duh. Okay. Salt is tryhackme, alright, that's interesting. Alright, crack station, what you got for us? Poly. Alright. Cool. Alright, well those are pretty easy. Uh then we have this really hard salt. And this other thing. So I believe if I use uh John, I'll open this up here and man John. And I'll see if I can get salt. Allows you to achieve, for example, you can crack only some salts using salts too faster. Alright, that's account, that's not what I care about at all. Alright, so man hashcat. Salt. See, well salt given in hacks. So what type? Oh, so you know what, there's um there's like a ah man, hash wiki or something. This is what I needed, alright. And then we'll go to six. Sha five two, great. And then the salt. So let's see. Hash type, what'd we say it was? Five twelve? Hash type, what'd we say it was? Five twelve? Yeah, sha five twelve crypt. So sha five twelve. Pass salt, salt pass. Alright, let's go back to this John here. Alright, still running. Um, what is this? Oh, it's the Cowboy Bebop stuff, alright. Alright, so let's look up um using hash cat with a specific salt. And no salt, I have a word list. What I gotta do? Verify the hash mode. So syntaxed, salt, point text is this. I have used following syntax, it got line length exception errors. Use hash cat tag A O. So tag A. Tag A is attack mode, so we need to figure out our attack mode number. So hash cat, tag A and then tag M. See the reference below. Permutations attack mode. So this right here would either be attack mode straight combination, so probably O or zero rather. Attack mode zero and then we're looking at mode. Mode being not an M D five but a five twelve. Hash assault. Hmm. Using John the Ripper with salt. Hmm. Yikes, that looks crazy. I don't know what that's about. And then there's this other one here. Which I'm not sure is about either. A salt pass. So would it be this one, you think? So let's see. Cracking salted Linux shadow hash. Hmm. Cracking salted hashes. Go to infosec write-ups and see what they got for me. So that kinda does look like an M D five hash. So I'm gonna which task is this? Task test two, one, two, three, four. Two point four. And we'll put the hash. Oops, that's not what I wanted. Alright, so something like hash cat tag M O, tag A zero stupid four user share wordless rock you. Token length exception, so that cannot possibly be it. We're not using a dictionary attack mode. It's not a hash, no that kind. Salted M D five hash. So I gotta put the salt here. Okay. So let me go back to them. And see how that works. Token length exception, so that cannot be it either. H Mac. So at this point, I feel like I'm just guessing at like um what it could possibly be. A, did we get it? Hmm. Exhausted. So it looks like that is not the one either. Man, definitely feels like I'm just gonna be spending my whole life trying to figure this out now. Hmm. You might have to start using hash cat here, not online tools. You got me. Uh Come back to this here. Wand I wonder what this is here? Unrecognised hash format. So what it says? Is this correct hash? I do not want that then, so Okay. Let's see if I can go on here and figure out what kind of hash this is. Two Y dollar sign twelve. Hashed. Damn. Sha one hash. The prefix two alpha two whatever is a hash string in a shadow password that indicates the string is a B crypt hash in modular crypt format. This is important to hash after crack. Let's see. Means so it means so the the salt you have in your data is an additional one used using B crypt. Build a rainbow table for each one. So we know it's B crypt then. So what does this do for B crypts? B crypt. Okay, three thousand and two. Hash cat the B crypt. So three thousand two hundred. Man, I was so I was so short myself. Hmm. Go back here. Ooh. So this is very long time to crack this one. Uh, cool. So how do we filter rock you? Um, so output strings uh four characters per line. I think I need to sort. I would that's what I would do. Oof, alright, that didn't work. Hash Y two token length exception. Hmm, so them hash one point one whatever. Alright. Oof, alright. So, ooh, mas maximum password length. So how do I change that? Cha hash cat tag H. Uh maximum tag capital O. Hmm. Did we get it? Dictionary cache hit. Password's running. Okay. Hash target, blowfish, B crypt. Dope, alright. Uh estimated time eleven days, three hours, oh my god. Uh, we're we're gonna need to pump this up. Alright, hash cat benchmark hex salt assumes halt is given in hacks. Output file show last remove. Let's see, what else we got here? Case space. Nah. How do I speed it up? Gonna melt my my CPU. Um this is a really crappy uh thing to do search site cat hash cat examples for this. Could take very long time to crack either filter rock you for four character words where you use a mask of four letter case. Oh, I'm already there. Oof. Yeah. Yeah, like I want to make a script where it looks at the line, like reads in the line, if the line is longer than four delete the line. That's what I wanna do. Hmm. Alright, well while it's going let's all answers mean a rocky password list. So I know that's uh six with the hash. So let's go back there. And we'll go to more severe key examples. P L M Must exist in H Mac sha yeah, I already got that. Sha one try hack me. That was exhausted, that did not work. So let's see, what did I mess up here? Uh cat hash two point four. Just to make sure. Oh, I may not completely wrong. Uh I'm gonna leave this hash two point four to uh crack the hash. Man, can't believe this is taking me so long. Um so let's see cat hash oh thanks man, I appreciate it. Yeah, I'm uh I'm suffering here for sure. So I know it's an H Mac sha one and the key is equal to something pass. Hmm. That does not seem right. I need to figure out how to crack an H Mac sha one. H Mac sha one key number four. Make sure the input hashes are in hash cat combined format as shown in example below, example key equals pass blah blah. And what did I do here? I did wrong thing. One five zero Oh, hash cat's already running, so it's not gonna wanna do anything. Appreciate that man, thank you very much. Uh not a lot of action going on right now, literally just waiting for passwords to crack, so it's the worst, um crack. See if I'm able to do H Mac out here. Probably not, but maybe I can. Hmm. H Mac. H Mac sha one, so I'm gonna go ahead and try this. Oh, they want email notification and I'm not gonna be doing that. Oh boy. Bro, this is impossible. Um gotta nearly start tomorrow, yeah dude, I get it. I'll be here with you tomorrow morning. Hmm. Dictionary attack mode. Plain text. Alright, this is uh we're gonna we're gonna hold off for this one, this is a lot. How long does this one take? This one is exhausted. And it did not work. Man. It's gonna really really bug me. So how do I add an add assault? H Mac sha one key dash plain text string corresponding blah de yada. We need to change it so it's compliant, so cat hash two point four. Okay, did that. Hash cat tag M one fifty. Did that, tag A O. Alright, let's I mean mm it says that should be in rock you, but it definitely does not seem to be that way. So let's go to checklist. Passwords. And we will try one of the other ones. Um what should we try? Is I'm just gonna keep adding zeros till my computer melts. Oh my god. Tag O. Oh, maybe this'll do it. H Mac sha one use the try hack me salt. Making sure that I did not mess anything up, I did not. Classic list. Alright, so I'm gonna go ahead I'm gonna download this classic list. There we go. Just in case what I'm doing is unnecessary. There we go. Looks like that's the only thing I can imagine is that the list is bro. So what is this one here? Really hard salt. So salt and then password, six salt and password. This is killing me. Sha five twelve, right? So then what do I gotta do? How do I know that this is query? Extracting the hash of the file, creating a hash file. So Hmm. This one is sha five twelve. Salted five twelve maybe. Hmm. Oh, I'm not a robot. No results. Hmm. Some hacker you are, he can't even unhash a password. I'm bro, I'm terrible at this. I'm dying here. I'm a newbie, that's why I'm in the uh the beginner stages. If you got any advice, I'll take it man. Absolutely. 'Cause I am failing hard. Do me a favor and and tell me how how I'm supposed to be fixing this. So this right here we figured out is blowfish, right? And then this here is really hard hard salt uh five twelve. And then this right here is H Mac sha one. Oh no dude, I I do no technical stuff at this point, I'm n not at work, so everything I do is uh you know, I wield a PowerPoint with deadly accuracy, so uh very much beginner level, just hanging out. How you been then? How's uh the three D printing going? So this is definitely H Mac sha one. I mean and Hmm. H Mac sha one, you'd use tag M oh one fifty and we're using dictionary H Mac sha one. You'd use Tech M R one fifty. And we're using dictionary Tech mode because we're using Rock U. So Rusty for contacts apparently we shared the same supervisor. Oh really? Nice. Well give them my love and affection whoever the supervisor is. Let 'em know that they failed me because I cannot do uh a very simple uh box cracking hashes. I felt like a pro. I was knocking out. I was getting user, I was getting root like a no problem whatsoever. But here I am, just dying. Hmm. I I don't even need this window anymore. I'm gonna go ahead and close that one out. Spend the rest of my night just trying to do this. And this will take fifteen years. So I know how long the password is. One, two, three, four, five, six. Six characters on this one. This one is much longer. What's the hint on this? H Mac sha one. Cool. I know that. I've got the salts. Maybe do I have it backwards? Yeah, that's what I've got. Uh H Mac sha one salt hash cat. Making my unit this factor going away gift. Nice. Oh, that's awesome. What kinda stuff you making? There's a lab manual. Do I dare? Sign in with Google. No, I'm good. Fire up Cali. Use the thing. Great. Choose your word list. Did it. Grab the hashes. Got it. Correct the hash. Shadow hash list. Okay, got all this stuff. Eighteen hundred? What is eighteen hundred? Eighteen hundred is sha five twelve. That's not what we're playing with right now. Yeah, what is uh what is the going away gift? Mainly forty K. Going away gift did a dice box that I sold at a local market day in town. Did actually paid a hundred and seventy five dollars for rights to sell prints. Wha that's cool man. That's awesome. I wanna make stuff. I don't have a three D printer. But here, good things. Sha five twelve. Remove. It tells hash cat to remove the hashes that has been cracked. What I need to do is limit the number uh or number of characters in a password that it's trying to crack. That's what I need to do. Ho oh, you know what? Uh maybe this'll help too. So I'm gonna continue doing that. A O. Sure. Oh, it started running. Never gonna get anywhere with this. Plenty the unit. Name and gold. Nice. I on top. Gold lightning bolt key along with a custom name plates on the back. The name plates on the back I think is kinda cool. It's pretty dope. Cat uh So what we got in hash? Hash is my Blowfish one. So I'm gonna rename this. Remove this hash one point one. That's literally the same one. Gotta do a little bit of organizing here because this is uh and that's my H Mac. So H Mac Sha one. Yeah, it's awesome. I love swag man, so. Got a web page or anything where you uh sell forty uh Warhammer forty K stuff or anything like that? Um I think the bot doesn't like links, so you're gonna have to like space it out or something. Gotcha. Yeah, that's fair enough. Right on. Are you planning on moving anytime soon? Are you uh sticking around where you're at? I haven't even been trying to crack this hash over here. Alright um what's this one? What did I say this one is? Sha one. Sha one f sha five twelve. One second. Just gonna take a look at this. I think I said this was sha five twelve. Yeah. Alright. Uh let's see. I hope I got a solid year before I get anything. Not pressing any buttons, so we shall see. Yeah, no, I'm um I'm very happy where I'm at, so I'm trying to trying to stay here for uh as long as possible. So we have the hash. We know the type. Sha five twelve. Let's go back to main hash cat. And we're gonna look for sha five twelve. Ooh. I should be one sixty. I think that's why. I think that's why it's messing me up here. I think this one's seventeen twenty. And the other one is yeah, I think I need one sixty instead of the one fifty I've been doing. Separator unmatched. Oh uh because now I I renamed that one. I renamed that one. What did I call that one? Uh that's an H Mac one, so H Mac. Okay. Yeah, I'm not trying to go anywhere. I don't really wanna go to Hawaii or Texas or anywhere really. Working shipwork. Oh, that sucks. Exercise planner job. I just met Dayshiv and then literally this last week two people went, you wanna be in C P D plans? I wanna be in S dot and I'm Darth Vader. That'll know. Ah man. Uh let's see, what is it saying here? Hardware monitoring phase not found any system temperature abort trigger disabled. Correct. Ah yeah boy. God, this is the thing about hash uh hash cat. I hardly ever use it, so I don't uh actually know what the hell I'm doing basically. Correct. There we go baby. Alright. Some dumbass number. Alright. Cool. Let's go back to this really hard one. Uh apparently all you gotta do is read the manual. Uh what did I say this one was? Oh nice. Uh was I there recently? No, I haven't been there recently. But um so I did some C P T plans and I uh but not at the team level for the C P T. Um it's it's interesting stuff. You'll have to hit me up. Or I'll hit you up. So um but I I'm not actually gonna be in the office for another few weeks. I'm doing uh language training at the moment, so Alright now, what did I say this one was? Sha five twelve or something? Let's go back to sha. Sha five twelve. I thought it was salted dot pass. So I think that one's gonna be seventeen twenty. Not sure though. I think I need to take a look at example of seventeen twenty. No. Seventeen twenty is not the right one. Hmm. Eighteen hundred. Empty five pass for the salt. No, that's not it. Pass salt. Salted pass sha one. What did I say this one looks like? Operational level for this? Yeah, okay. Echo access planner, depth hit and chat level. So that sounds awesome. Herby training would be OP level training on how to work or OP level training on how to work and A O C. Yeah man, we uh we should definitely talk. What the hell did I say this one was? Six um It's in the sha five twelve. Let me double check myself. I feel real dumb. If this is like if I've been just skipping past this the whole time. Alright. So this one here, let's go with sha five twelve and we'll go with the mode of eighteen hundred. And we put this as uh sha five twelve. Correct. And see if anything pops up. No hash is loaded. Really hard salt. No loaded. No hash is loaded. Chat. Sha sha five twelve. Salt. Example. What does it look? Oh god. No, I just wanna see what it looks like at the end. No, that ain't it. Playing any games or anything man? I've been uh um mostly playing Overwatch, just hanging out. Um but I really wanna play the the Dungeons and Dragons uh beta, whatever that's out. Haven't really messed with it at all though. The research room. Uh okay. Sorry to be out. They consume my life again. Oh nice. Started playing in twenty eighteen, realised they added a crap ton of new content. Oh dude, I would love to check that out. Um I think your sister was big on that for a while there, so Yeah. And the main crypt. Sha five twelve crypt. Eighteen hundred, so I got the Yeah, sha five twelve crypt example. More trying to keep up with painting. Oh nice. Finishing B A. So low on gaming time. Four more classes left. Hey, congratulations. That's awesome dude. And I might try to go uh dark side commission. Hey, I mean someone's just gotta do it, so might as well be somebody who's experienced uh the enlisted side. Oh, you know what? Let me uh get rid of this. Sha online one does not token length exception, so it's not correct. I messed something up here. Yeah, I know. Uh absolutely. Go for it man, get it. Somebody's gotta do it, so might as well be you. Look for assault on username. Type six. Cool. Sha five twelve. Characters after blah are the salt. Yes, that's what I want. Uh cool. Uh cool. Mode eighteen. Got it. That's correct. Sha cracked. Remove. I wanted to remove. Sure. Sha five twelve. And then the passwords. Where where was this uh where was this document here? Sha five twelve cracked. I do not have anything here. Cat. Sha five twelve. So I'm messing something up. I'm not sure what it is. I know what it is. I'm I'm a flipping moron. Vim. Sha five twelve. So the the uh salt's already in there and I'm telling it where the salt is, so maybe this is completely unnecessary. So let's go back at it. I bet you I did that right now. Alright. Thinking about R P Gs. You ever hear about the one page uh rule game called Everybody is John? No, that sounds awesome. What? Tell me tell me more. I uh So it's just not a one page game and and you can just start playing? Alright, give me the give me the elevator pitch. See how long this thinks it's gonna go for. It is what the heck? Bro, there's no way that I can let this go on for a thousand six hundred and twenty five. Okay. Rejected restores. Um okay. Estimated time two hours. Bro, that's too much. Alright. See this elevator pitch. Competitive R P G. The players are the multiple personalities. They have a single character John. Very much one session game with high crazy high jinks. Think petty theft crazy, murder hobo crazy, Casanova crazy and so on. Oh, hey Digimike. How's it going? Uh hopefully the music's not too loud. Uh I just I need something without words. So that way I can like focus on what I'm doing. You know what I mean? It just having a beat going just keeps it uh nice and steady for me. Uh I one hundred percent want this uh single personality game, so I'm gonna give me the name of this thing. Uh let's see. I think you did actually. The game was called Everybody is John. Everyone is John for plebs. Alright. RPG geek. This is something I uh gotta go buy someplace. I need uh I'm not trying uh I'm not trying to get beat up by somebody who's like I P and all that. This is just kinda what it looks like. A competitive role playing game for three or more horrible people. Oh my gosh. That's awesome. I'm uh I'm gonna have to see if I could pick this up. Probably can pick it up at like it's from two thousand and two, huh? Uh D M's Guild. Let's go let's go do some some research here. Everybody is John. Okay, not here. They have a legitimate place I can get it so I don't get like uh destroyed and sued or whatever. Oh, just the pic. Okay. Yeah, I feel you. When I write code, I listen to lo-fi. Oh yeah, I love lo-fi. That's uh that's my number one go-to. Um right now I'm listening to uh some YouTube sta uh no, not YouTube, Soundstripe. It's my extension. See, switch switch it up a bit. Honestly, I didn't even know that you could hear the music at all, so uh kill vibes lo-fi. Boop. That's my number one go-to. Do you do pentas pentassing for a living? Nah, I'm just a just a scrub here, man. Just uh I can barely even crack hashes. So this is this is my extracurricular for funsies. Just living the dream. Uh I do uh like mostly PowerPoints for people in the military, so uh U S military. That's about it. Um this right here is for funsies. Uh where was I though? Status. Uh cool. This is gonna be another million years. It's only been going on for four minutes. It's crazy. Alright, so what do I do with the rest of my time, man? You know what I like what I really need to do? Middle management for the win. Yeah, dude. Absolutely. Hey, thanks for the follow, man. Appreciate it. I I can't even call myself middle management. You know, I just just a guy that's just uh ignoring ignoring his emails as best he can. Just kidding. Um Alright, yeah. So what am I doing now? Um I can't do anything while this thing is just cracking stuff, so I need I need something to do. This is good though. This is useful. I can't believe like so part of the problem I was facing is that I um in the first one I was in the was the H Mac Sha. Alright, so let's read the H Mac shot one. So I was using the wrong uh algorithm, the wrong mode in hashcat. Uh I was off by by like one, which was crazy. Uh and it it completely messed me up for I don't know, an hour. And so now uh I am currently working on the Sha five twelve. Um and what I had going on in there was I like a moron used my salt and I added it to the end of my uh my entire hash, which was completely unnecessary. It was messing everything up. Yeah, appreciate the uh hanging out with me, Coop. Thank you very much. Uh try around of everyone is John. One hundred percent. Um I will definitely play that game with you. You tell me when and I will do my best to get there. Um yeah, hit me up, man. Uh you have my Discord and and all that. I mean you can find me on the internet, so we'll talk. Have a good night. Alright, so uh yeah, that's that one there. This thing could have been cracked by now had I been, you know, doing stuff. And I might have to let the other one crack, you know, uh start keep running for the rest of the night. Maybe. This is my blowfish one. So I have a fi uh Sha five twelve and I have a blowfish um hash that I need to get done and then I will be outta here. And my life will be complete. Mm let's see. Do you do much with uh you said you you code, Digimike. What kind of uh coding do you like to do? Are you like a somebody who scripts? Are you somebody who uh likes to like code in C, like web web guy? What do you do, Digimike? Hmm. Still running, still running. And I cannot run two concurrently. So what I could probably do is I wanna take a look at Rocky. Okay. I need to create a script to read the lines of my file and then delete anything that's over what do we say? Four? Four characters. Script to delete any words greater than X number of characters. Let's see if uh uh stack overflow has something. Bro, first thing. Oc length. That's uh that's flipping beautiful. Follow would do the trick. Let's delete in one place. Alright, so let's take this oc thing. And let's go to uh ooh um what is it? Um Linux uh decrypter or something? No, I don't know. Um translator. What is it called? Explainer. Hmm. T R commands. No. Um Linux command explainer. Explain shell. That's the one. Alright, cool. So let's read this here. If we do oc length less than or equal to five. Oh, the input text. Well, let's go back, eh? So that's the software. Alright, wow. That looks uh super easy. So I'm gonna copy Rocky to uh just rock dot text. And then I'm gonna type in that command. See what happens. Oh, that's beautiful. Uh let's make that five or excuse me, four or less. And then we'll name it um snip. Sure. Oop. Invalid multi byte data detected. Maybe mismatched pretending your data in your whatever. Alright. Cat. Well, less snip. Let's see what happens. Alright, dope. So this thing is still going. I wanna try the other one and we'll see what happens. And then uh if I can get this last one for level one, then I think I'm gonna chill on this uh level two one because I don't wanna take like a sh a long, long time. Oop. So we use snip. And what do we say this one was? The blowfish, right? So hash cat. What did we decide blowfish was? Blowfish be crypt. Alright, uh cool. So attack M thirty two hundred. Attack A zero because we're gonna be using dictionary. Uh dictionary's gonna be snipped and blowfish will be what we're doing. And we're gonna output it to um blowcrack. Alright. Alright, we'll see how that goes. Twenty one minutes? Not great, but not two hours. Uh way better than the like fifteen hours that this was supposed to take before. Alright. Is there a way to like increase threads or something on hashcat? No, I think hashcat is G P U controlled, right? So Alright. How did I not? Oh, you know what? That's probably because I didn't need uh uh this was an oc. Cracked. Dope, we got it. Alright. So cac cac. Uh well cat. The blowcrack. Blah, son of a bitch. Fucking bleh. Ah. Alright, sure. Bleh is. Alright, so we have the really hard or salt. One, two, three, four, five, six. Let's remove snip. And we will use that same oc command that we did earlier. Well, almost same. And we'll make it fewer than six. Alright. Uh and what do we say this one was? So we're done with blow. We're done with the H Mac. Now we need the Sha five twelve. We'll say Sha five or Sha five twelve crypt. So Sha yeah, bleh. Bro, I spent way too much time on this already. I hate it. Uh that was eighteen hundred. Alright. So let's try eighteen hundred. We'll call this uh Sha five twelve. Crack. Sha five twelve. That was actually a really valuable skill to be able to use oc uh, so I'm excited about that. Alright, let's see how long this one is supposed to take. And maybe it'll take less time. Who knows? Pure unoptimized backend kernel selected using per kernels enables cracking longer passwords. Drastically reduced performance. Alright, let's uh let's not do that then. Alright. In time. One second. Let's see how long it estimates it'll take. Using my Ryzen five twenty six hundred X six core processor. And inside of a V M. By the way, bleh. Bleh is right. So it says it estimated time is twenty two minutes, which is great because that's now I think the last one said it was gonna be twenty six minutes or something, so uh we will hopefully get something not too far sh longer and we'll be done if even if I did it within, you know, half an hour or so. That'll put me at having completed like three different rooms uh within three hours, which is not great. You know, I'm I'm just a newbie, whatever. Uh but I'm learning. I'll learn that oc thing. Highly recommend that. That's that's gonna help, especially try hacking because try that's gonna help especially try hack me because try hack me tells you um how many characters are gonna be in each of the answers right so so long as you don't mess up the the number like you can count and I really can't like it's weird um then it should work out very great. Sure. It's a little bit of cheating but the point is not to consume all the electricity in the world or whatever trying to crack some dumb password and try hack me it's not that important the important part is uh yeah. Uh the important part i is learning how to use the different modes in hashcat correctly. And uh making sure that your salts look right you know that I think is the excuse me that your salts but your your hashes look right. Um yeah I could always learn more oc stuff. Yeah actually I think I I bought or either I used it in the library uh O'Reilly or whatever had a book for said in oc. Um and I maybe it was part of a humble mobile bundle I got I'm not sure but you know what uh maybe I need to be doing like said in oc uh an hour a day and during my lunches or something so uh that might might make my life a little bit easier. Alright this thing is still going uh twenty twenty one minutes give or take so what can I do? Oh yeah definitely uh take a look at this explain shell thing to help answer questions about like what these commands that people are telling you to run are so you're not just like mindlessly running some stuff even though you know we all copy paste from Stack Overflow um but at least we try to learn a little bit right? Alright was this one useful for me project twelve cracking Linux password hashes with hashcat and this is from some Sam Sam's class on info um so I don't know I'll keep it might be a good resource. Uh this is just Google this thing did not help me alright. And of course this is the the big old the wiki example sheet from hashcat dot net. So I was able to figure out that it was a ha a sha five twelve crypt uh because of the leading uh six enclosed in the two dollar signs making that money. Um and there's a note for a footnote for number two here. And in the footnote it says uh the number of rounds or iterations is optional here after the signature so you could put like five thousand rounds if you wanted. Um let's see so where was that here? Eighteen hundred. And I guess I would be in in an apes apostrophe uh uh I'm gonna have to see an example of of that being used 'cause I haven't seen that yet. I'm so close eighty nine percent of the way there just gotta wait for this thing to to get going man. Oh you know what I should've done actually? It's probably should would've saved me even more time would have removed any uh any password that was not exactly six characters. If I would've done that bet that would've taken like no time at all. So maybe I'll learn how to do that with oc uh now. How to uh use oc to um damn. Remove words bigger than blah. Alright. So that's what that guy tried grep said oc so this is making it smaller then right so if we tried to do something larger okay this is not it good so let's um I'll take a look at the rock up text and do the command length and oc length greater than less than let's see a less than five? Ooh no I think that would destroy let's see. We'll test it out. Okay let's see. And what was the file name rock copy that text. Cannot open rock copy no such file alright. I got you. Oc length rock copy that text. Ooh alright that was a mistake. Um see if I mess it up. Mass rock copy that text. Ah did it delete all of the the letters all the words here? Probably. Copy that text dope. So let's try being less fancy. And we will oc anything that is greater than oh god. Nice. Alright I think I got it. But it cracked it while I was too busy learning. Alright cool uh let's cat uh sha five twelve crack. Uh waka waka ninety nine guaca waka alright. Let's see uh if that works. We did it yes. Alright cool man that uh that was a big pain in the butt man I'll tell you what uh let's go ahead and document how we did today. Great job great job everybody we did it. Woo man I learned some stuff today uh so we'll go with uh what was this one called crack the hash. And uh crack the hash. Alright so what's this badge look like? badge looks similar to the badge we already have I think. Probably the hashcracker one right? Let's go back up here. That was room number one seventeen fantastic. Beat it and uh way it took way too long to do this. But we learned about how to uh manipulate files with oc both reducing the um like cutting it so that way we have we have um text that is no greater than six and no less than six using using oc and use mostly crack station to get most of these passwords super e super easy. So let's go ahead and give some respect to the individual who made this Ben thank you very much Ben. The uh tryhackme co-founder what's their Twitter look like? Already following them obviously 'cause they're doing things. He retweeted something about uh threat labs log four J you know go check him out. So let's see I think uh I think that's pretty much it for right now. Did we win it did we get any points for that? Let's see I feel like we started with uh fifteen thousand five hundred and ten points. And we don't have to shut down any rooms here let's go ahead and shut that down. Hey we made it up to fifteen thousand seven hundred and eighty. Not my I like to get a thousand points a day if possible but I don't know can I do anything within the next eighteen minutes? Learn. Let's go to practice search we'll go to search we'll go to easy. And then hide the completed ones we've done. And uh let's see. Hey learned by doing approach to the find command. Let's see if we can uh I don't know maybe a C T F. No need for a walkthrough here yeah? Alright. Hmm something easy. Skynet alright let's do Skynet that looks like a fun one. Whoa look at you with all your points. Alright what are we gonna be doing here? We're gonna clear C D dot make uh Skynet room like that. Oh I have a Skynet one already. Oh maybe it it's getting late for me obviously I'm getting sleepy. Uh I did I click the button to start the room I gotta join the room first. Alright. I'll get all those fancy victorious winners I wanna be one of them. Alright hasta la vista baby. Able to compromise this Terminator themed machine apparently somebody did it write up already there's a fish on one I guess on the blog cool. We have a few questions to answer what is Miles's password for his emails? What is the hidden directory what is the vulnerability called when you can include oh that's local file inclusion. Uh nope. I guess not. Equal up remote remotes. File inclusion they tell me right here remote file. Alright so uh let's start with some GoBuster I guess start getting our GoBuster command ready GoBuster dir tech U we're gonna be putting in ten dot ten dot whatever. Uh we'll be using a worklist so user share worklist um I don't know dirbuster we'll use a small one. Directory list two point three small and we're gonna output it to uh actually C D uh Skynet. Boo. And then we'll do a GoBuster. And then we'll output this to T H M Skynet uh GoBuster small that text. Cool it is up and running let's go to fifty eight dot forty two. Let's open up this here see what we can find on ten dot ten dot fifty eight dot forty two. Alright Skynet is up and running looks like they have a search over there oh that's pretty dope. Uh looks like I have image you can post things I'm feeling lucky alright. Uh let's get see if they got anything on robots. That text go ahead and run that. And then looks like we can get to admin already. Admin is forbidden we cannot get to it is a three o three o one error. Fair enough fair enough. So we can't get there. See panel. Type anything else feature I don't know. Alright so none of that is working uh let's go and get our s uh M S F D B going M S F D B run. Is tryhackme free? Uh yes so yes and no. Tryhackme is a uh free web page however they do have web page or excuse me rooms within tryhackme that are not free. Uh let's see about this one more so Skynet is uh a subscriber only room but there are other ones that I did earlier within the last two hours and forty seven minutes that were free rooms so uh and you can find the free rooms that they have by going to tryhackme clicking little book here going to search show free only. And um then searching. And then let's see what they offer. Looks like there's uh ten per page probably and then thirty eight pages available so like three hundred and eighty uh free rooms that you can do um if you do all the rooms they have for both free and subscriber rooms you will see that there's four hundred and nine pages ninety pages available so you know like four hundred ninety whatever uh stuff. Devops. Wanna try it out? Hey yeah man thank you even though you saw me struggle for so long uh I that makes me that that warms my heart that you're willing to try it. Um hundred percent there's there's very easy rooms they have a lot of walkthroughs this is um there's some exploratory learning but there's a lot of uh like they break it down for you so uh so that we can like learn by doing somebody's on on the journey with you that's part of the reason why I like tryhack me I think it's kinda 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 nice. Like I said they don't pay me I pay them so that way I can access their rooms and stuff so um yeah give it a try dude hit up the the discord I'm athlete over uh there um spelled like a cool guy. Um so hit it up and uh and let me know when you get there happy happy to welcome you alright so I'm over here. Let me go back to my room so that way I can go hack some stuff. Where was I? Skynet alright uh so let's run an Nmap scan uh Uh so let's run an Nmap scan, uh D B oh excuse me, let me create a workspace, so workspace stack A and we'll call this one Skynet like the room, workspace Skynet. And then uh do my Nmap scan to see what types of uh ports are open. I'm gonna use a sin scan uh when I do it. It's supposed to be stealthier, but you know. Uh Nmap is noisy. So I'm just gonna go for basic stuff here, nothing too crazy. Uh let's see what's going on with my GoBuster. GoBuster's still doing nothing. So looks like there's a couple questions that they have here, like for example uh if you were a subscriber and you were able to access this room you'd see that there's an official um walkthrough that somebody's already written up uh from the staff or whatever, so um alright, what is Miles's password for his emails? What is the hidden directory? What is the uh vulnerability called when you can include a remote file for malicious purposes, we already talked about that. What is the user flag and what is the root flag? Alright. Okay, we hey we look uh we got a bunch of ports open here, an S M T P port, excuse me, not S M T P, that's port twenty five uh POP three port. Uh looks like S M B as well. So because we have S M B open, I'm gonna open up another um C D O tag I. And I'm gonna do uh gonna go to my little site or my my folder, and I'm gonna do enum for Linux. And see what I can find. Maybe enumerate some loser or some losers, some users. Phew, that's too easy, alright. Looks like I'm able to access Skynet. Looks like they have some shares um that I can get to. Print anonymous Miles Davison. Or Dyson, Miles Dyson. Curious, yep. I was hit denied. So while that's going, uh what's do you now that I have a few ports that I know are open uh I'm gonna do S E tag S V ports two two eighty one ten one thirty nine one four three. And there might be more ports that are are the popular ones, but um you know, to save myself some time hopefully, by not scanning the thing. See what I can get within seven minutes. Minimum password length is five, alright. Got the Skynet share. The ha do you have an anonymous share? So once this pops open. Alright. So let's go ahead and uh we're going to uh let's see script. S M B. I think that works. You can do all the S M B scans on uh on this place. And then I'll add it to my uh my M S F console database, so Man, enum for len Linux is uh oh this is my GoBuster. Oh, I wonder if I've uh in doing GoBuster while while doing this enum for Linux if I've maybe made it sad, so we'll see. Or I I'm running enum for len enum for Linux as well as GoBuster as well as uh my Nmap scan, so very possible it's getting slammed right now. C D O tag I, I'm gonna be trying to do a T H M Skynet. And we're gonna use S M B client. And we'll take a look at what we gotta use here. Uh I P address uh will be ten dot ten dot fifty eight dot forty two. Uh let's see, do I gotta put anything else? And S M B client. Maybe I didn't even put that tag I. See what happens. Not enough, blah. Oh uh okay. Service password, username. Maybe I gotta put a username, let's find out. Hmm. Alright, I can already tell that I need myself a O list host. Alright, so Skynet. See if that works. Nah. Mapping denied. Listing denied. What about this here? Miles Dyson. Blah. Alright. So let's do some research on how to properly use uh S M B client, S M B client cheat sheet, boom. Okay. Oh. Oops. I've used it before, obviously. So okay. L I P username I P share, alright. So we'll go with uh username is anonymous ten dot ten dot fifty eight dot forty two. And share was what, Miles Dyson? Connect failed. Did I make sure I spelled that correctly? Access denied, alright, let's go back to anonymous. Attention, alright. Um am I in the right place? Get attention. Ooh, excuse me. And C D logs. Get log two dot text. Get log one dot text. And get log three dot text. Alright, let's go ahead and exit. So let's see. Let's get less attention. A recent system malfunction has caused various passwords to be changed. All Skynet employees are required to change their passwords after seeing this. Miles Dyson. Alright. So let's see, log one. Ooh. Last log two. Log two seems empty. Last log three. Cool, so log one looks like it's gonna be our password here, so uh I'm gonna try Cyborg, blah de yada. I wonder if Miles is the guy that we're gonna be going for. Uh so let's let's use Hydra. Hydra tag L, and we'll use, I don't know, Miles, I guess. Uh with the password file of log, oop, no. Lowercase capital. Uh log one dot text. And we're gonna be going for ten dot ten uh fifty eight dot forty two. And um what else? Oh S S H. And we'll see what happens, I guess. Hmm, I don't know if I should be doing GoBuster while I'm trying this. Gonna go ahead and stop GoBuster. Did we get anything? Zero passwords found. Hmm. Think I broke it. Ninety five percent of the way done, alright. Try one more time, see what happens. Alright, so did it not work? What happens when I do Skynet search? Definitely done. Nothing, alright. Did we get anything out of here? Uh using our GoBuster? 'Cause I think I may have just been throwing way too much out of it till I went crazy. Boop. And we'll just let the the small list go by itself. Definitely wanna see if I can get that admin stuff at some point, but uh I wonder what other users might have been on the box. That's what I need to be doing, honestly. Need to enumerate users. Because I bet one of these will be the password. Of whoever's in, let's see, like cat attention. Miles Dyson, you know, I wonder if it's Dyson. Yeah, Dyson's the the uh the name of the person he'd be using. Dyson, last name, you know? Haven't broken it yet, so that's good. Uh zero passwords found. Does he have the long ass Miles Dyson? Right now I'm just guessing at the uh the username. Okay, so neither of those worked. We have, what else we have here? Apache, POP three. Oh, did we already enumerate users here? Computer name Skynet. Account used guest. Not quite done here. Hmm. Alright, let's see, you know what, I haven't looked at in a while the questions. Did we say that Miles Dyson was not the enumerate Tampa, yes. Did enumerate Tampa? Let's go back. File attention. Stat attention. Okay. Wonder where these logs came from? Oh, I wonder, did I not Hmm. Oh, you know what, I bet those are the S M B passwords, nah, I'm thinking about it. Lab and at September seventeenth at eleven. And all of these were September eighteenth. So definitely here. Okay. What other users? Like I need to know what other users are on the box. I don't know the users, um Hmm. History. What's that say? History zero. Hmm. Oh, that's not gonna work. Um I just don't have like who like what the passwords were. Cyborg zero zero blah de yada. I mean, I could try something like this. Oh my god. Bro. Alright. I quit. Um I don't have his name right. That is definitely that is definitely a problem. So let's see. S M B client. Do I not have the right password? Is that the problem? Cyborgs double O seven Halo Terminator. God damn it. Uh what could it possibly be? Dyson. Hmm. Like I wonder if uh that's a permutation like M Dyson, which would be awesome. Like M Bison. Hmm. Did Miles work? Nope. Exit. Damn. Hmm. Alright, so I'm gonna look at the web page. Gonna reload. Sure, whatever. Have any cookies or anything? Just kinda at search. Nothing popped up. Anything on the console? Inspector? Nothing, nothing. Hmm. This thing is uh very annoying. What is the hidden directory? Alright, let's go back to GoBuster. Let's start with a medium, I guess. Because some part of the issue I've got here is that I'm not able to see anything. This thing is not done daily. So we're gonna stop with that. We're going to search M S or S M B. Scanner login. So use eighty four. Show options. Not sure what the password would be. Admin root? No, it can't be root. Skynet. It's pretty lame. I know it. Alright, so search services. Pop three. I need to do search Dovcot pop three D. Hmm. Info zero, see what we got here. File to download. Explosive command check and vulnerability against the Dovecot. With uh whatever. So I need to remember how to log in with um pop three Linux. So let's all add telnet. And then ten dot ten dot uh fifty eight dot forty two. One ten. Service not known. That will obviously because I uh totally borked that. Alright. Dovecot is ready. Alright, uh user Miles. Print text authentication disallowed. Cool. Pass. Not that. I'm gonna have to search what that means in like two seconds. Alright, let's let's do a Google search. So I need to use T I need to to make it authenticated. So telnet telnet's not gonna work. I bet you I'm gonna have to do like SSL. T O S. Like an email application or something. But I don't know what email applications are on here, if any. Hmm. V I blah certificate. I don't have an SSL key. Hmm. Show missing. Set r host ten dot ten dot five eight dot forty two. Show options. Set S M B user. That's not right at all. Ten dot thirteen dot thirty one. This is my l host here. So when it comes back, it comes back to me. Set r host ten dot ten dot fifty eight dot forty two. Show options. Show missing. I don't have an SSL cert. Hmm. Yeah, alright. So let's try going to that port on here. One zero. Address is restricted. Damn. Man. Alright, we're so close. What is the hidden directory? Hidden directory is the one of the bigger issues that I'm facing right now. 'Cause I have the hidden directory, I can't see or do anything. So let's see if we can search for another S M B enumeration here. Num users. Let's see. Use eight. Show options. Set r host ten dot ten dot fifty eight dot forty two. Show missing. That's right, let's see what happens. We're not able to n handle. It's an encrypted request. Hmm. Oh, Windows domain E T S four authentication. Uh what do we say the Windows domain was? Workgroup. Hmm. Nothing there. Oh, probably because of Windows, huh? S M B domain user enumeration. Use four. So what I'm doing with set G is I'm making it um global, so that way I don't have to do that again. Um let's see what happens. Run. Communication error. Alright. Hmm. Skynet. Work session. Squirrel mail? Squorum mail? That can't be right, is it? No. Okay. What am I missing here? Is there real question? Cat attention. See what the attention says. All Skynet employees are required to change password at the scene is Hmm. Walter. What is his password for his emails? Um How C T F emails. Um C T F emails Linux. Hey, what's going on cereal? I am getting to the border of my uh ability to to keep my eyes open. Uh I was gonna be done two hours ago, but here I am. And uh man, I might have to just call it for tonight. I gotta get this hidden directory. I gotta get this user flag and root flag. Without even the hidden directory at this point it it might be uh it just might be sleepy time for me, man. I was hoping to get, you know, my my one K, but might be not a tonight thing. What are you up to cereal? Yeah dude, I am so broke. I'm dying. Dying right now. Got a class in the morning. Uh that's alright though. I will be back. Hasta la vista baby. So I have Miles's password for his email. So I thought maybe if I went to um telnet to open up the email, that might that might help me. See services. So Oh, um how to log into Dovecot. Linux. There you go. Maybe this is what I need to do. Oh nice, what you playing? Ugh. Ah man, that sucks. Uh well you know, man, I the way I look at it, that's just to to not even give these people hope, you know, when you get these scani scam emails. Hmm. League, nice. Yeah, I've never actually played League. I thought about it. I've loaded it up, I've downloaded it. I just never actually did it. Hmm. Right now I'm just kinda trying to enumerate what is going on with this uh with this Skynet. Stay away, it's not worth it. Yeah, I hear that man. I that's what I hear, that it's uh toxic or whatever, but I mean that's what happens with every game. See, I've played the game for six to seven years. I hate it, but it's like crack. Yeah dude, I get it. I appreciate the follow, thank you very much. Do you uh stream your games? Maybe I can learn a thing or two or something. Maybe that'll get me inspired to to start playing. Yes, no, maybe so. Man Halo Terminator. Uh all this Terminator stuff. I bet you it's like uh man just wanna use Hydra and try to brute force it or something, but the email is not working. Samba? Not quite. not quite. Did I do a service scan? Yeah, of course, 'cause otherwise someone have told me that. I used to a while ago, I took a break because my mental wasn't doing too great, but I still like regularly play a bunch of different games. Yeah, man, I understand. I definitely gotta take a break uh from time to time as I push on into my like three and a half hour uh session of this thing. Yes, I also will take a break at some point. I'm get oh, oh I wonder. Ooh. Okay. I am hoping, I mean, maybe, maybe this'll work, but I got an idea. It's probably not gonna work, but maybe. Uh, what if I were to use log one? Would that would that get me anything? No. Alright, damn. What a waste of time. Uh man. Oh, admin, I guess. It's been so easy so far. I do not have permission for this resource. Give me permission. Forbidden. Is there anything in robots? No. Oh, I just thought of something. Uh, what if I try going for common? And then look for like text files and, I dunno, P H P. What else is out here? I have no idea what's going on right now, but I've always been interested in learning about cybersecurity. Oh well, man, uh, you know yeah, absolutely, go for it. It's uh it's a good time, it's fun. Highly recommend it. Um, where I am right now is tryhackme dot com. They have lots of free and uh easy walkthroughs, like right now what I'm doing. Um, somebody's already done it and they've written an official like walkthrough on how to on how to do it, do. Um but I've been stubborn and I didn't wanna crack. But I might, I might just do it so that way I can learn from the experience and finally go to bed. If I don't get something by three forty five, I think I'll go through the walkthrough. Give myself fifteen minutes. It's a four minute read. Yeah, alright. If I don't get something oh, if I don't get something in five minutes, then I'll go ahead and and go through the walkthrough and and learn what I'm doing wrong. Uh yeah, tryhackme dot com, let's see. Uh this is it here. Um, so what has been going on? So basically uh, you get given a task. Deploy and compromise a vulnerable machine. You click the button here, you deploy the machine. Um, then you look at the questions they're asking you do and then you go find the answer. Now, what I did initially was uh I ran a scan against all the open ports on the computer. Uh, and those ports are basically entryways into uh the system. Services are being hosted on that system. For instance, uh S S H, which is a secure shell, so you can access the computer remotely. Apache is like a web server, so like that web page you see is hosted at port eighty. They also have on port one ten a uh email server as well as Samba, so this is like a file share, sort of like, well yeah, file share. And then this is uh another part of the email and more file share stuff. So, knowing what services are being run, you can do a search on uh, you know, if they might be vulnerable to exploitation. There's a search exploit is uh is uh something you can uh it's an offline version of the of exploit D B. Looks like this service has exploits that I've run against it. Um, or that that can be run. I don't know what version this is, is the problem. So, let me search Dovecot and see if I can like enumerate the service version. Insecure configuration command injection. Uh, so let's do info on this. This module exploits command injection vulnerability against Dovecot with X M using u shell option. It uses the sender's address to inject arbitrary commands. Since this is one of the user controlled variables, it has successfully test uh been successfully tested on Debian squeeze using the default X M four with the dovecot com pa uh packages. So I'm not sure if this will work against that system. Use zero. Check. Can't support the check. So, I've seen a few YouTube channels that talk about things like this. Yeah, it's a good um good way to to, if you like puzzles then highly recommend it. Index A H M L. Uh, so what I'm running on this screen here is basically a brute force, excuse me, a dictionary attack where there's a list of uh common directories or file names. Um, and then you ask the web page, hey, do you have h dot h c a. Hey, do you have this? Hey, do you have this? Hey, do you have this? And it's gonna return a response either, hey, you're not allowed to look at it, or sure, here you go. Um, and when it does, then uh, you know, then you then you can go access it or do something against it depending on, or it might help enumerate what exactly you're looking at. Some Oh nice. Yeah, like if you're looking for a document or whatever, this might be a way to, a good way of doing it. But I now have an issue where these are hidden directories that I cannot access. So I think I'm gonna have to call my attempt over. I'm gonna look at the blog. See what the blog has to say. And we will learn together, you and me, as a team. Alright. So, what did I do? I scanned ports using nmap like I did. Used Go Buster to try to enumerate directories. Experiment with S N B map to find shares. I used S N B client. Uh, okay. So we see that there's a web server running, cool. Uh, used Go Buster to try to find directories. I did that. Um, sometimes we're confident that there's something to be found, we waste some time on it. There are often rabbit holes to trip you up. So, S N B map allows users to enumerate Samba shares. We found the anonymous share uh up here somewhere probably. Uh, and it'll let us look at some files. Um, log one dot text has a bunch of piles on it. Cool. S S H is disabled, great. Go Buster revealed squirrel mail, we saw that. Um but it doesn't allow me to get to the squirrel mail, so maybe I did something wrong? I'm gonna try it again. Oh my god. Alright, I'm gonna stop reading this. Because um not sure what the deal is with this, because I found the hidden directory that they're talking about. Well, maybe I did, maybe I didn't. We have Miles. We have the password. Error, unknown user. So maybe I gotta go back to Miles Dyson. Type the password in again. Alright, Miles Dyson works. Samba password reset. Alright, great. We have change your password after system malfunction, password is blah. From Skynet to what's his nuts. Great. Polars. S N A, let's see, options. Compose. Squirrel mail. Oop, that's actual squirrel mail page, you don't wanna go there. Ooh, check this out, binary. Let's go ahead and go to Cyberchef. We'll uh try to take a look at it. Let's try, we'll start with binary. Balls have zero to me to me to me to me. Okay, cool. That's weird. Uh, what else we got? I can I I everything else. Balls has zero to me to me. Okay. Very weird. Seems like a lot of information taken taken, it's pretty intimidating. Uh, ah, it's just it's just puzzles, you know? En enjoy the puzzles. Yeah, I don't know, that was crazy, right? Um, see what's in drafts. Nothing in the drafts. Let's see what's in sent. Sent sometimes have stuff. Nothing in sent. Nothing in trash. So, let's see. What else did we have available to us? Uh, see what's in this. Let's uh see if that password works. S S H to Miles Dyson. Ten dot ten dot five eight dot forty two. And what was this shenanigans that we saw here? See if that works. Nope, did not work. I did see an email for Skynet. Skynet at Skynet. Hmm. Oh, Skynet. Okay. Skynet Hydra. Oh. I'm gonna try to use Hydra in this file here. So Hydra we'll use the name Skynet. And then the password file log one. For what do we say, S S H? Sure. Ten dot ten dot fifty eight dot forty two S H. Probably won't work, but uh, we'll give it a try. I still don't know what's up with this squirrel mail thing, man. They're the bugger, man. I mean, this is the hidden directory. There's literally no reason why this should not work. I don't know. Uh, alright. Cool. Maybe it's time for me to go back to my back to the walkthrough, I guess. Man, I really thought I had a breakthrough there. Alright, um, let's go back to it then. Okay, it revealed squirrel mail. We logged in to his email, password reset. Miles's share, so that's when we go back to Samba. So S N B client, uh, attack U. Miles Dyson. And what'd we say was the Oh, whoops. Those are not the ones. Ten dot ten dot fifty eight dot forty two. Login failed. Copy. Alright, Miles Dyson's password worked. So, let's go back here. I'm still getting messed up uh about this uh S N B thing. Uh, are improving neural networks, something or other, securing structuring your machine learning project. Great. Notes, so notes. Ooh, alright. Search important. Get important dot test. Take a look at what's important. Add features to beta. Son of a gun. I was getting so wrapped up around like what the thing was, that it was right there the whole time. Alright. So Miles Dyson personal page. Doctor Miles Bennett Dyson, original mentor of the neural net processor to lead the development of Skymen lead to a computer A I intended to control electronically linked weapons in defending United States. Okay? Cool. He has a web page. Bro, what is this sound? Alright. What is the user flag? Alright, so where was that password that we found? Up here. A notes directory, learning, blah blah blah. Uh oh shoot, let's go back to the email. This is the S M B password. Duh. So we found the email password, which led us to the Samba password. And now we need to figure out where the user flag is. So let's go back to Miles Dyson. Uh-huh, okay, I got an idea. Let's go back to GoBuster. And we know this other directory. Let's see if there's anything in here that might be able to help us. So uh GoBuster is not recursive. You need to um identify which folder you wanna start looking for things in. And now that we've found a new directory we might be able to find a place to be, like this administrator one. So that was a ten dot uh actually four five K R Z A. Alright, great. Kappa, kappa C M S. Oh my god, this is use a valid username and password to gain access, see if it's shared. So I dunno, admin, admin. Nothing. Alright, so let's see what kappa C M S is. Search kappa. Alright, search exploit kappa C M S. Uh exploit D B has something for us. Kappa C M S file inclusion. So attacker might include local or remote P H P files. With this vulnerability, user tainted data can be bad. Alright. So ha. So target kappa alerts. Password. Alright, so Boom, alright. So we can get Etsy password. Can I get shadow? No. Home user uh user dot text. Oh, you know what? Why did I do that? Let's go back. I can see all of the uh the users. Uh roots. And usually to the bottom here. Dovcot, Miles Dyson. So we'll see if uh field configuration. Alright. Oh, I guess it midnight has passed. And I I got my next streak for the day. Alright. But I can't get the root password yet, so Hmm. Ah, so I could include local or remote P H P files. So I could um host my own P H P file. Which I'm gonna do. So I'm gonna go to uh C D. What is this called again? Um Oh, don't tell me I got these files. Alright. Uh Skynet. Now that I'm here, I'm gonna go to get a P H P file from my desktop. Uh home me downloads shell probably. Documents. Hmm. Uh cool, copy this to here. And then I'm gonna less the P H P. Reverse shell implementation. Cool. And I'm going to vivid. And I'm gonna set my I P to my I P, thirteen dot thirty one dot forty three. And one two three four is fine. Now I'm gonna do a Python tac m H T T P dot server one two three four. Okay. So I'm hosting a server now. I am going to do a ten dot let's see if this works. Ten dot ten dot thirteen dot thirty one dot forty three. Uh one two three four. Damn, what was the file called? This P H P reverse shell. Dammit. Alright, so what I need to do is actually change this to one 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 one. Sure. And then I need to set up a listener. Like netcat, tac L N V P, one two three four here. Alright. Boom. Nice. Four hours exactly. Uh who am I? Dammit. Alright. I'm W W data. Uh C D root. So what I'm gonna have to do at this point is find oh man, hmm, what can I find? Uh C D root, can I get there? No. C D home. C D Miles Dyson. See if he's got anything in here. Backups. Huh, cat backup dot S H. Yeah, I bet you I know what's gonna happen here. This backup script is gonna get run. So cat Etsy crontabs. Cat Etsy crontab. And he runs the backup dot S H. Oh nice. Alright, so can I write to this? Um Alright, so let me set up another uh N netcat L N V P uh thirteen thirty seven. Alright, so I'm going to echo uh netcats. Actually, we'll go and use uh reverse shells. So rev shells. I think this is um another Triakme guy that has put things together, Zero Day, I believe his name is. Thirty seven. We'll do a netcat. I don't know if netcat tacky is gonna work. But maybe. See him. Netcat tacky doesn't necessarily work all the time, so we'll see. Backup dot S H. Ah, permission denied. Well, let's look at the path. See where I come right to. That's right, let's see. I bet if I can write to if you send home, root home. Backups, backups dot S H. Okay. Can I move this? Can I backup dot S H to backup uh back, sure. Hmm. Backup dot S H. Can I file? Oh. Uh start backup dot S H. What can I do? Hmm. I don't have a password for W W W data. See if there's anything weird looking. No, that doesn't look right. Hmm. What can I do? What can I do? Man, I feel so close. Yeah, I feel like I'm getting there. I'm real close, but um I can't echo into it. And I can't even, I don't I wouldn't even know what to what it'd be able to echo. sudo bin bash. No, um let's see. Hmm. Oh, I know what I need to do. The password I found out in the email was to S M B. Uh so that's not gonna help me here. I tried to S S H with it and that'd been no good. You copy the binary instead of the password, I think. No, no, I got I got well, maybe. Um let's go back to it, how about that? Go back to the email. Oh, I'll uh I will be borking myself. And then what do we see in the email was squirumel Miles Dyson and then uh what was that terminal area? And then I went to the Samba. It says specifically that this is your Samba password, right? So I go here, I copy it, and then uh uh run the terminals. So S S H Miles Dyson at ten dot ten dot uh fifty eight dot or was it fifty eight, fifty eight dot forty two. Cool. And then just to show you, this is the password that I got. So I'm copying it. And I'm pasting it into here, you can't see the paste. Now you're good. I'm trying it out. And then it, you know, it it denies me. Um so where was I? So I now I have to think of how I can escalate my privileges from a low privilege user to a root or a higher privileged user. Or at the bare minimum, try to get lateral um uh privilege escalation to to Miles. Um So what I wanna do, what I uh what's my automatic assumption of what I gotta do is um go to Etsy crontab. So this is these are scheduled tasks, right? And this is one that gets run every minute with root privileges. In home, Miles Dyson, backups, backup dot S H. Uh In home, Miles Dyson, backups, backup dot S H. Uh this script gets run. That script is backup dot S H. Goes to C D var uh W W W H T M L and then tries to tar this um this file. Uh so uh turns it into oh yeah, absolutely did. Um they'd start very easy, very simple, so check it out. Like I said, hit me up on the on the Discord. Uh but yeah, so the script gets run with root priv privileges. So if I could insert anything in here um then I would be able to get root to be doing what I want to do. Um this backup that S H is r is owned by root, which is the problem. Uh and I don't know, everybody has the ability to execute and read does not have the ability to write. So I can't really do anything with this file right this second. Um Discord. Oh, I don't even know if that link still works. Let's find out. Invading valid. Um it's I haven't like done um this kinda stuff in a long time, so let me go ahead and I'll try to update that shortly. But uh Discord is very um quiet, we'll say. Yeah. H T P S discord dot G G E. There you go. But yeah, I'd be more than happy to to help out or answer questions or whatever. Oh, I I wasn't meaning uh head to my Discord. I meant uh you know, you could check out the tryhackme Discord and you just go to their official website or whatever. Their website or their Discord is is like a partnered one and very um you know, very out there or whatever. Lots of people there. Uh damn, I am so close to the true flag. See the hint. A recursive call. Oh man. Hmm. Hmm. Oh, I wonder. No. Well, you need someone who alright, thanks man, I appreciate it. Um yeah, no, absolutely. If you if you wanna start doing this stuff, I'm happy to help as much as I can. Obviously, I'm most of it is me bash my head up against the wall trying to figure this out. Alright, so let's because it's getting past the four hour mark. C M S reveals this. Cool, got a thing, got an exploit. Awesome. Got that. Uh Yep, just like I said, backup is being called every minute. Uh so shell that S H. So this helping that security best explains how this vulnerability works, but eventually tar has wildcards and we can use checkpoint actions to execute commands. So if we create a shell uh dot S H and then this is what I'm gonna need to do research on this here. Exploiting wildcards on Linux. A hundred percent, that looks interesting. Oh. And here it is. Checkpoint one, checkpoint action, execute. So if we are here and then I were to put my own I P uh ten dot thirteen dot thirty one forty three with my port. Uh we'll say it's uh four four four. I'm gonna need to exit one of these here shortly. My cat tack L N V P four 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 four. Shell dot S H. Alright, cannot create shell dot S H, permission denied. Oh, well. Yeah, that'll explain it right there. Permission denied. So so if I go to temp, I'm gonna go to temp and I'm gonna see if uh ah dang. Var Oh, I see because here in C D if when you uh change directories to var W W W dot H T M L, well that's something owned by uh the user that I'm at right now. And so if I were to make this shell in here and then I introduced it uh the checkpoint. I I think I see. So now we're in oh, that is dirty. Uh so tar reads that incorrectly is basically what's going on here. And then it goes ahead and just grants you a shell. Who am I? Root. Wow. Uh this I'm definitely gonna have to do some more research on. I really appreciate that uh they taught me this maneuver because this is ridiculous. So now using uh exploiting checkpoints, checkpoint wildcards with tar, we're able to gain access as an elevated user. Dude, that was awesome. Wow, well. I I'm really really happy that I learned this technique and I'm gonna have to do a little bit more research on it. But for now, um let's go ahead and shut her down. Gonna go ahead and see how we did from the official tryhackme page. Go check 'em out. They have all these walkthroughs. They have they they really do hold your hand in trying to learn the tactics, techniques and procedures in order to become more proficient and um and a better security professional. Or just to you know, just if you're interested in stuff, it's good for puzzles and um you might be able to one day contribute to to the security field, so uh did that, went ahead to a dashboard and didn't quite make it to sixteen hundred or excuse me, sixteen thousand points, but uh that's good enough for now, I think. So thanks Saint for hanging out with me serial, I really appreciate it. Thank you very much. Uh Digimike for the follow and um uh let's you know, let's do this again sometime. I'm next time I'm gonna be streaming is on Friday uh around the same time, so take care everybody. Cheers. And uh